We got it clear at seven thirty.
Today's Tuesday, November eighteenth, twenty thousand, twenty twenty-five, six P M. Calling a regular village board meeting to order. Appreciate everybody attending here on the YouTube channel and on Zoom and in person. We will have a roll call of officers, Donnie Kern present.
Caleb Garn.
Brendan Crone.
Chris Marino.
Charles the third.
Chris Duback.
All present. Let's stand in for the pledge of allegiance.
What do we do to the United States of America, to the public, which is standing one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all?
Public comment on agenda items, we got a full agenda here, so let's try to keep it to two minutes in person, fourteen minutes topic. Artie.
Long time no talk, Mark.
And I still live at seven ninety. I'm, I'm gonna be very short, I wanted to thank everybody on the board for the contribution they made to our senior center. He passed a little card around where the individuals that most often are there wanted to take the time to say thank you. The dollar amount was definitely appreciated, I think one of the big things that most of us that are seniors, we need to socialize a little more. A lot of us living alone, so that we're by ourselves and talking to yourself to get the right answer, but it's not always the best one. I wanted, wanted to thank you, I think one of the big things that you donated for, we, we got a commercial sized coffee maker and we serve coffee. Monday through Thursday from ten until eleven thirty, and it's a good time to get together, discuss what's happening within the village and the township. A lot of our members, in fact, I did a little searching, of twenty-three percent of the residents of Saint Croix County are seniors aged sixty and older. I couldn't find specific numbers just for the Somerset area, but twenty-three percent, there's a lot of us out there that need the time to socialize. Lately, big topics have been what are you using for health insurance, is your Medicare in order? It's, it's really a good time for us to get together and share concerns that are with people in our own age group, and thank you again for your generosity, we appreciate it a lot.
Thanks. Any other public comment? Online, no, hearing none, a closed public comment. Next item on the agenda is a consent agenda. The only issue I'd like to note here is the one thousand seven hundred ninety-seven dollars on the village bills is pulled off. It's under the agenda item for seven B, well, Riley invoices. Other than that, what's the pleasure of this group?
Caleb Garn make a motion to pass the consent agenda.
Seconded. Motion made seconded. Any discussion? Motion to pass the consent agenda is on the table, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed nay. Motion carried, next item is new business, discussion possible approval, use and occupancy agreement, Olson sanitation. Just reviewed this with the attorney, he had made some edits, right Paul? And this is the, this is the standing one, you've had a chance to review it. This is kind of what we're doing with the Olson sanitation as far as the leasing of a space.
All of the changes that Paul made are in this one, right here. So I'll make a motion to approve the use and occupancy agreement with Olson sanitation as presented.
Both made seconded to approve it as presented, Olson sanitation agreement and discussion. Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed nay, that motion is carried, next item on the agenda is discussion possible approval, C U P application. Allow Olson sanitation to temporarily store roll-off containers of village-owned land, in your packet, you'll see that there's a conditional use permit for Olson sanitation. This has been reviewed by planning commission, correct? And it was recommended for approval, as it's been presented, what's the pleasure of this?
Caleb Garn make motion to pass the C U P for Olson.
I'll second.
Motion made seconded to approve the C U P to allow Olson sanitation to store their roll-off containers, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed nay. Next item on the agenda is discussion possible approval, fire department's comprehensive plan, five eagles training consulting, Bruce, this is your chance to sign.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening.
Been a while since I've addressed an official body like this, I really don't miss it. My name is Bruce Ferrenger, I'm from Eau Claire, a retired fire chief from there, and I've been operating five eagle training and consulting for the last decade. I've had the privilege of working with a number of counties and communities throughout the state on a wide variety of, of topics from hazardous material studies. To strategic planning, to evaluation departments, and this has been a very fulfilling post-career career. So I'm, I'm very happy to be able to be working with the village and the town of Somerset in helping the fire department develop a strategic plan. Normally strategic plans are three to five years, seven on the stretch, because things are changing so fast. But with both the village and the town having up to twenty-year comprehensive plans, the goal that should create is strategic plan to kind of parallel. What the comprehensive plan is in trying to identify what the future needs of the fire department would be. So even though it's, it's hard to forecast crystal ball that far down the road, we're gonna, we're gonna do our best in that. So to accomplish this, I sent a survey out and meeting with any of the, well, we don't internal stakeholders. With the fire department, and they have responded with very well response to the survey. And I'm gonna be swinging by their training tonight after I leave here and touch bases with them. And then today I had the opportunity to meet with several businessmen in the community, and I hope to be able to meet with a few more. Just to get their feedback on what their, what their experience, protection is with, with the fire department. And they did have an opportunity to through the fire statement, pick out the equipment and all that stuff, so. It's proceeding very well, the goal is to have this done and ready to present to you sometime first quarter, after the holidays, or maybe February, depending on how this all comes together. But what I'd kind of like to do tonight, if I could, and I don't want to sit here and talk more about that. What I would like to do, if possible, is to just get some feedback from you, the village board, on what you see. As a fire department's needs, what their future growth may be, the components of it. I understand you had a study done in previous years, I actually have copies of it, read it, about the proposal for a public safety building, things like that. But if, if you wouldn't care sharing with me, just for a few moments. The, the surveys we did were for instant swatch, or the spring weaknesses, opportunities and risks. And I can tell you right now that you have pretty good fire department, okay? The biggest, I mean, the strengths was the camaraderie, the teamwork, the training together. How, how they enjoy working with each other on emergency scenes and in community events, so in both settings. The weaknesses were, you know, how can we improve our team, you know, working together? Communication has probably come up in every setting I've ever been, including during my career, so there's always ways to improve communication and that. Some of the other opportunities were the types of service demands that the fire service is expanding into. And as you well know, over the past several decades, particularly post nine eleven, the demands on the fire service have grown from simply putting out fires. To confined space, collapse rescue, above ground rescue, hazardous material, law enforcement. Fire department has to be prepared to respond to this all, anything. When nobody knows what to do, who do they call? Not Ghostbusters. I don't want to expect the fire department coming to. So all fire departments have to have, they have to be able to multitask under a number of different emergency situations. And they need at least a minimum amount of equipment, especially so that they can at least secure the scene and maintain public safety until the experts come in and support them in the response to take care of it. So they're, they're ready, willing and able, they enjoy what they do. Travis, the fire chief said, they're very fortunate in that they actually are pretty successful in their recruiting efforts, people want to come here and work, you know, on that, which is awesome. What I've seen in the volunteer departments, about eight on call departments, is a shift from the volunteer departments being made up of members who have were born and grew up in the community and been there for twenty, thirty, forty years, now you're seeing a younger generation that comes from the outside. And they want to come in and work and do that, and they do it because they enjoy, well, one, they enjoy the work as a primer. But they enjoy the environment, the camaraderie, the support they get from the community, so that they can get back, so. You're seeing a transition in the generations and what they need, what the type of support they need, okay? When I started back in mid seventies, you know, and going out and working in volunteers, they needed good venison dinner. And a case of beer to be happy with, okay? And it's not the case today, by the way, the venison had to be wrong. Cannibal burgers, that's not the case today, today they're looking for what shows that they are appreciating and care for, a good personal protective equipment, so to keep from being injured. Good equipment to work with, modern equipment to work with. These, these kids and young men and women are, are sharp. They're, they're willing to come in, in the middle of the night, on their days off, if they can get out of work, they're willing to do all that. And all they ask in return are the tools and the training to do the equipment. And in the past, a lot of it was, we'll teach you as you go, you know, now the, with the N F P A standards and the state of Wisconsin. Standards for firefighter training, it's, it's a whole different ballgame, there's, there's a lot of demands on these, and when career departments, they have it easy, once they get their training, they, that's their job. You know, the volunteers have to find time to do it at the expense of their family and person. So to have a crew like you have that love what they do so much, my hat's off to the communities for supporting them so bravely, and that'll be reflected in the report as well. So with all, with that being said, I'm just curious from any of you, what you see as any of the strengths or weaknesses, or perhaps threats, what they're gonna be facing in the future? And what could be a challenge that they need to prepare for or work for? And what might be a challenge for the town or the village to do to help support that?
Well, I'll start, just for lack of time, and this, I'll, I'll say that, I would probably say right now with our growth that we're starting to experience, and the needs that are going to, that are going to require from that growth. The size of our trucks and, and the size that we have to store our, our vehicles are going to be of significant concern as we continue to grow. So that's something, but we are very fortunate as a community to, to have this volunteer fire department be able to operate between two municipalities, so I'd say that's a strong strength that we can sit down with our, our friends at the town. And, you know, agree that we need this service and we fund it together. And figure that, figure that whole thing out, but they, they house them right now, but I don't think we could, if we continue to grow, we're gonna be able to house all the equipment that we're going to need, with only twenty-seven people right now, we're gonna need a lot, lot more people in order to staff that and, and sizing and, and so I think that's what I'm, I'm seeing long term.
Thank you, yeah, I was surprised to hear that, that fire station's been there for fifty years.
Yep.
The size of there, so that's, that's had longevity for sure.
Right.
Thank you, sir.
Anybody else wish to offer anything? Otherwise, can we get your email and maybe send you something as we ponder this kind of stuff?
Yeah, all my contact information.
What's your drop-in on getting that kind of information back from us as we, as we continue to think about this, oh, hey, we?
Yeah, that, that would be wonderful.
What, what's your timeframe you're looking?
Um, you know, and anytime before the end, I know we're coming into hunting and the holidays, so, you know, anytime in the next eight weeks or so.
So, so before Christmas?
Um, maybe at the end of the year sometime.
By year end?
Yeah, that would be good. Are you putting up together a plan, like, is this a joint for the town and village?
Yes.
And or one or the other? Um, I'm sure it's gonna be joint, because as, as Donnie said, it really is a joint department and is fiscally supported by, by both. And the town has the facilities they're using now. And we're just, you know, and if something happens to the village or they move with that, like, there's a lot of cogs that have to fit together to work, yeah, for this.
And then your con, is his contact information been sent to everyone, or we all got his?
That's right, your contact information is out there or?
About, oh, it's worked, yes.
Okay, we'll make sure that she, she emailed.
You're gonna always start to trend.
Okay, perfect, thanks very much for your time.
The other thing I just want to mention, as I heard from Travis, is that if something does occur in the future. The ambulance that runs out of Lakeview.
Yep.
I still said if there is a space, they consider running an ambulance out of Somerset. Instead of adding a ten, fifteen minute response coming to town.
Sure.
At no expense to the, to the village and the town, so.
Good enough.
I mean, you've got some good partners out there that money helps make this work.
Right.
That would be great.
That's very good information, thank you very much. Thank you, Bruce.
Excuse me, I'm gonna go to training.
That's what, that's what they say.
Yeah, old dogs. Enjoy your venison, thank you.
Next item on the agenda is discussion possible approval, fee scheduling, equipment. I've been asked to have this pulled out, because I wasn't quite sure what this was, but I think this is just our really charge for our stuff if, if if we needed to utilize it for something.
Yeah, and that's directly from the state.
Pretty easy, yeah, I don't think we, I don't think we need to pull.
No, I just, I pulled it from the consent.
Oh.
So I don't think there's, do we need to approve that?
Yeah.
Okay, what's the pleasure?
I'll make a motion to approve the equipment chart list as, as it is.
Seconded. Motion made seconded to approve the equipment list as presented, discussions, hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. What's his name? What's carried? Item, next item is update punch list from M S A. Gas Fest LLC.
Chuck, not here?
Chuck is not able to attend to that. Yeah, so this is just identifying the punch list items that were put on, a lot of these have been corrected, but we don't have an update for you. But just that, that a first natural punch list that we always give, so this is that.
So this requires me to need approval?
Just, just awareness that there's a punch list, that there's, there's very few things left out there to do, a lot of this punch list stuff was created when construction wasn't done, but.
So you're not asking for approval for anything?
No, just, that, that one's just for awareness, because there's no action.
This is the last.
Just for awareness.
This is all for.
Yep, it's service here from God West.
Okay. Seems to be going at, at a schedule, I assume?
Yeah.
Good.
It's going very well.
Sorry, looks great up there, I gotta say, it's a, it's right along.
Very clean side up there.
Yeah.
Doing a really good job trying to communicate, having a public break, so we're pretty happy with.
So you guys got water and everything up there now?
Yeah. Water's in first lift, really the only thing left to do is the last lift of apples, wine or meat.
Is that gonna happen this year, or is it gonna be in spring? Okay, kind of figures getting a little cool for that, when, when do we anticipate folks being able to run up there?
Uh, first, I would say April.
On those first two buildings, April? And then are you gonna continue with the next ones through the winter framing or?
Yeah, we've poured six basements, so we'll, we'll continue to frame on the next two, so right now we have a an apex that has four three-bedroom, two bass, and then four two-bedroom, one bass. Then we building one, which is a twelve unit, is all one-bedroom, one bass. Now we're jumping to a twelve unit that has two bedrooms.
A little bigger.
Eight, two bedrooms, one bass, or one bass, one bed, and then we'll jump back to another apex.
Perfect.
Hey, we're gonna see all these offices.
Well, I know there's some interested individuals from the senior center that were already worrying about that, so.
Perfect. Oh, I'm sorry, I should have reviewed this before, this punch list, but I didn't see it, are we putting stop signs, that can be four ways?
They're in order.
Okay, all right, so I've driven through there a couple times, now I'd have been like.
Yeah, same.
Okay.
So.
Perfect.
Can't get a ticket until we're in.
Yeah, that's right.
So has the lift station been powered? What we're waiting for?
I have an update on that, it sounds like the twenty-sixth of November, if I remember.
Yeah, this month.
So that's when they terminate, and then thinking, I don't know, guys, the.
Anything else? We're gonna roll on with the line of credit reduction, winds-up initial phase, six F.
So request us for to reduce their line of credit down to ninety-two thousand, three hundred and six dollars and forty-nine cents.
It was at one twenty-seven? Was it at the one twenty-seven?
No.
Am I gonna have to pay it?
That's.
That's kind of it.
Theirs is at like seven hundred.
Funny.
And they have a lot of work they had to do, and they've got that done, so now this essentially kicks them into warranty. And they have a year, that's anything they were.
Is it at one ten?
Yes.
And we had a punch list there too.
Yep.
And I haven't seen anything on that.
There's, the only thing that's remained is Roseland Pool on the north or the west side of that pond. Between the road homes and the school, which that's the sweet, that's what's being retained. So they're gonna work on that as they advance the first edition.
So how much are we dropping the, the the line of credit down?
It's ninety-two thousand, three hundred and six and forty-nine cents.
Twenty-nine?
Right to the penny.
And that circumspect, but there's, that's so I understand there's still stuff out there to cover the, the, the holding on that, right?
Yes.
There were some other issues on that, other holding pond, is that had nothing to do with that first, right? That's all been done and turned over and the, the winds app, the, right before you get it from Bruce Larche away, there's that, that first pond there on the, they'd be on the south side.
There's a sinkhole settling, and that also will be taken care of, I don't know, with that, literally it's just fabricating some water. So.
They were aware of that, they were working on it, and every time they'd get ahead of it, it was.
They wanted the ground to freeze, so they didn't start tearing up that here and so.
And which pleasures to me.
So the first one, six F, which is the line that puts the nine, ninety-two thousand and some change, whatever you said, all those numbers, right?
Yep.
And then the next one is six G, which.
Well, we'll handle that one first.
Yeah.
We're gonna do F first, or what's, we're, we're talking reducing
their line of credit.
The line of credit down to ninety-two thousand, four oh, three oh six forty-nine?
Yeah. So move.
Seconded. And made seconded to reduce the line of credit, uh, line of credit at winds-up initial phase to ninety-two thousand, three oh six forty-nine, that correct, Bob?
That's correct.
Further discussion. And you're just, there is enough money left with that ninety-two thousand, three oh six to cover anything that we have outstanding there, including them sinkholes and everything. Further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
What's his name? Harry. Now, G, line of credit reduction, pinevalve, first edition, I think that's a, is this from Carlson Engineer, that letter?
Yeah.
Yep.
One twenty-seven? Is what they're looking to reduce it down to?
Um, I, I came back, so that number's gonna be one thirty-nine, seven hundred. There's a ten percent.
Ten percent reduction on top of that?
Included into that, so that's.
One more time, Bob.
One thirty-nine, seven hundred.
Yep, thank you. What's the pleasure of this committee?
So move.
Seconded. Second. Motion made seconded to reduce the line of credit for pinevalve first addition to one thirty nine seven hundred. My only question is, are we gonna reduce that without, with, what are we reducing it down from? Because there, there's that. We still have that issue of, uh, water and stuff on the backside there.
From two hundred and one thousand.
Pardon?
Two hundred and one thousand.
So we're basically dropping at, uh, seventy grand? That's still gonna be enough there to cover that if there's any problems with that, uh, on, on that backside with, uh, vanasses?
Mm-hmm.
Yep. So I want to make sure of it. Any further discussion?
They'll go into warranty, meaning they, we're here and they have to take care of things. And then that's why we keep.
Right.
The line of credit in case they don't.
Right. So we have, we have to look at that in the spring with the runoff and everything. Now we got the roast up and see how that all performs. Hopefully it's gonna hold to what they said and, uh, we won't have to worry about it. We can get rid of, give them all their money back.
Correct, right, yeah.
Okay. No further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed name? Okay, carry. Six H, reduction in financial guaranteed line of credit, Capstone Investment Group.
Yeah. Point of information.
Thank you, Capital Investment Group, thank you. I'll make sure you guys are still awake here.
Anything? Same word.
Glad somebody keep me in line. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, uh, uh, in, yeah. What's the, is it in a packet here, Bob?
Yep, um, so the item that we have left is the binder which came in, uh, forty six, forty six twenty five. So that, that's the, the wear course. That we request to go on after the please process. So that's, that's just the reflected price of that. Um, and then the remaining punch list items that are on.
So Capital Investment Group, the punch list items are, how much are we talking about here?
Two. First. If you look there, you have my complete AI contract from my excavator. Which deals the total contract.
Yep.
I highlighted.
Dan's?
Yeah, yeah. So I highlighted yellow and green.
Yep.
Yellow is all the stuff that's completed. Green is the only thing I'm signing. So we did fortune of the second look at asphalt, which we just in from thirty five into Perrin Street. The beverage, non disturbed, no pardon. So if you go to Bales to finish, which is line item two point one four. That total was seven, six, five, oh, three, thirteen times. Let's see in your develop, that's in your typical developer's agreement, just a ten percent. Gives you the total final number of.
I mean, it's something.
Seventy six, five, oh, three, fifteen plus your ten percent. Uh, you'd be a total of, uh, remainder reduction from three ninety nine, three oh six twenty nine to eighty four thousand one hundred and fifty three dollars and forty seven cents.
What are the ones in blue?
That was my quick.
You got, we got ahead of you on that.
Uh, blue is change orders.
Okay, okay, um.
Those are capitalized already, paid for.
How many more do we think we're coming in? Possibly.
Europe.
Hopefully.
No, there is.
Okay, okay.
That I forgot was, you know, we identified, so we can't.
Okay.
Keep adding to it. You know, second agreements, that's going on, but.
So the number around eighty four thousand one hundred and fifty three dollars and forty seven cents?
Yes.
Okay.
There this. Yes.
It's a pleasure.
I will make a motion to approve that.
Motion made seconded to approve the amount of eighty.
Eighty four thousand one hundred and fifty three dollars and forty seven cents, that was part of the six H.
Right? Any further discussion? Does anybody understand what you're voting on? Alright. Thank you. Hearing that, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed name? Carry. Discussion possible pool of twenty twenty six monarch paving price company increase for H M A.
We just exactly.
That works.
Was, was H and I combined or are they different?
Supper.
I thought I.
I skipped over.
One per age, so. It's got I.
Let's do I then. Reversion of change orders, Capital Investment Group. I think I got that one approved. That was the blue?
That is.
Yeah.
How much you get amount total?
You have two line items. You have one, uh, you call the page eight of ten. Seven CO two stormwater revisions, thirty thousand six sixty two.
Frank, I'm gonna make a motion to approve the reimbursement of cha- uh, change order of three thousand six sixty two.
Sorry.
Motion made, is that the old, uh, motion made seconded to approve thirty thousand six six two change order?
Do I have to get, um, the crossing total three?
There's, there's a total, yeah.
I was gonna say, you wanna pull off and we'll get total then and, uh.
Yeah, so you.
Are you gonna just, the DOT crossings of three, uh, sixty thousand?
Well, it's like sort of sixty thousand, some of that ten percent of some kind, so like sixty three.
No.
But that is, you know, ten seconds, it's already done.
Okay.
Everybody's.
So we got sixty thousand and thirty thousand six six two?
Yep. And it was six six two.
Make a mo- thank you. Make a motion, uh, to approve change order, orders of ninety thousand six six two.
Needs to be paid out of the TID, right? TID funds, not coming out of the general fund. But this is in, in district six, right? No, five, five. Second, motion made seconded to approve ninety thousand six six two and change orders paid out of the TID, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed name? Thanks for keeping me in line on this one. We're, we're sitting right along. We're gonna go on to.
Thank you for color coding that.
I appreciate it.
In here.
So I went.
Six J, approval of twenty point six monarch paving company and price increase for where for it?
How much did it go again? Was it?
Forty six twenty nine, it was, it's forty, four thousand six hundred twenty five.
Four thousand six hundred.
Twenty five.
Mm-hmm.
That's an increase, but that's for twenty twenty six, right? And that's still up in the TID.
It will echo up again before we get to this point?
No.
Okay.
What's the pleasure of this group?
Go.
Second.
Okay, so I'll make a motion to approve the, uh, uh, monarch paving, uh, sixteen thousand seven hundred and eighty five thousand.
I was like, I have my way.
Sixteen thousand seven hundred and eighty five.
Four thousand.
Oh, four thousand.
The eighth period.
The four thousand, oh, just six thousand, we're not doing the, the parking lot on all that out there.
Six thousand, four thousand six hundred and twenty five.
That's where. Motion made, is there a second?
Second.
Motion made seconded to approve the, uh, price increase for monarch paving on the lift, uh, four thousand six hundred twenty five dollars. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed name? Motion carried. Discussion possible approval ordinance eight ten amending ten one dash twenty eight B five, parking prohibited or limited at certain times and places. This went through public safety, guys.
Yep.
Pete?
Yeah.
What's your pleasure? You wanna talk about it?
Well, we reviewed it.
Yeah.
It was reviewed and the reason it needed to be changed is that it's, it's for the safety and, and prohibited parking up and around that corner, right?
Yes.
What's the ch- what's the pleasure, Mr. Chairman?
Moving forward, the changes.
And motion.
That the most sample?
Yeah, yeah, presented.
Second. Motion made and seconded to approve ordinance eight seven ten amending ten dash one dash twenty eight B five, parking prohibited, limited at certain times and places. Is there any discussion?
We're putting signs up, right? That's to be discussed. Okay. I, I just.
I feel safer. Any further discussion?
Just.
Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed name? That motion is carried.
Are you gonna sign that? Again? No parking signs?
That's what we were saying, I think we were.
I just asked signs.
There's.
That's got a nice discussion we'll have to.
That'll be an.
Don't come on a public safety budget.
That'll be a.
Public works, we'll have to pay for signs.
Wait, you decide how to spend our budget? You've been off the committee for five minutes?
Next item is, uh, resolution twenty twenty five dash eleven, borrowing for TID seven property and acquisition. Can you pack it? We should have that.
Yeah, this is, uh, here with me here in a very exciting time to be part of Somerset. I'm very glad to see we're growing. I've been, this is one of the most amazing parts of being on this board and been able to watch this grow, uh, and this is the next step of that, um. But I'd like to make a motion to approve the resolution, um, there to borrow the money for the TID property in one, in the amount of one point five one million dollars.
Second.
For TID seven though.
For TID seven. This is a resolution to re- to reach out to the State of Wisconsin Trust, to borrow from the trust of the State of Wisconsin in an amount not to exceed one point five million dollars for financing the TID seven property acquisition. Motion was made. Who seconded it? Caleb seconded it.
The point of information is one point five ten million.
What did I say?
One point five.
Oh.
We might need that.
Yeah, you guys, you guys shorted me ten on the last one. One point five million, one po- one million five hundred ten thousand for financing a TID seven district. Any further discussion? This is exciting. Um, I'm glad to be part of this as well. Um, I, hearing nothing else, I will say, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
What was his name? That motion is carried. Next item, uh, is the resolution twenty twenty five dash ten, borrowing for TID five utility infrastructure. Nine hundred ninety three dollars four eighty six. This is also from the State of Wisconsin Trust. Nine hundred ninety three thousand four eighty six.
Go move.
Sorry, nine hundred ninety three million four eighty six.
For the lift station utilities.
For all that?
Less than a million.
N- nothing beyond the lift stuff?
Yeah, a lot of stuff too.
Oh, okay.
Cause the TID's gonna be going over there soon enough. Hopefully they'll be building there.
Only if I say yes.
Good.
I'm probably gonna say no.
Say that.
Hmm, I get a say in that.
What's the pleasure of this group? This is required, we have to pay this, right? I mean, we, we've already done it, we just need to pay the bill.
Yeah, right.
And, and this, the way we do it is by borrowing from the state, state, uh, infrastructure. This has already been discussed and it's part of our budget that we already established for our debt load. So we are basically okay to do this. It's just the formality to approve this to go to the trust for the, the, the funds.
Second. Did you so moved already?
So moved already.
We seconded?
Seconded.
Motion made seconded to approve resolution twenty twenty five dash twelve for an amount not to exceed nine nine hundred ninety three thousand four eighty six and no dollars. No further discussion, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed name? Or carry. Um, next item is appointments by the president. I'm going to, um, do a little change on our appointments. I'm, uh, appointing, um, Jessica Plur to, from, uh, Public Works to Public Safety Committee. And I am also going to appoint, uh, I'm gonna keep everybody, I've talked with Brandon, uh, we're going to, um, replace Brandon with Jessica Plur on, uh, finance and personnel. Uh, also. I'm looking at the Board of Zoning Appeals, but I would Jana on, I'd like to appoint Jana to the Board of Zoning Appeals. That was one that we missed from before. I think that's going to require a second on that, on that, right?
Yep.
Second.
So motion made and seconded to appoint, uh, Board of Zoning Appeals, Jana Smith. Stuart.
Stuart.
I'm sorry, Stuart. Why did I say Smith? And all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I, I'll oppose name? And any future, uh, appointments will come, uh, as a my board whole for you. You made my board. I gotta put Jana Stewart on the, uh, Public Works. I will appoint, uh, Jana Stewart to Public Works, too. Thank you for clarifying.
And me in Public Safety.
I already put you. So we got full board. Do you have any questions on my rambling here? Or you think you got it all there?
I got it.
Okay. We got a full agenda. I'm trying to get through it. We, we will make it. We're gonna make it and hear this thing in. Okay, um, that should take care of the appointments. Uh, I have one individual I'm still waiting to talk to. I've reached out to him, um, and there's a couple openings, but, uh, that'll come down the road a little bit. Otherwise, all the other appointments, we're gonna just keep as is, uh, for the time being. Next item on the agenda is meeting attendance via Zoom and public comment. I see we got, uh, the Zoom uh, back on the, uh, notice for individuals to get on Zoom. And I appreciate that. That's kind of been our standing policy for individuals. Sorry that you couldn't get on, uh, the last meeting on that, but, uh, um, you know, going forward, I, I think we should probably adopt a formal policy and we could work on that, uh, you know, establishing Zoom. Uh, individuals have reached out to us for public comment and, and, uh, you know, wanted to make public comment via Zoom. We've always done that in the past. I'd like to keep that going if we, unless we as a board agree to change that. So.
So we have to update the resolution to become a policy?
Mm-hmm. I think we've come, we'll come with one. Um, we have this, uh, I, we can actually just, it's a formal, as I say, we will have Zoom going forward, uh, you know, for, you know, for the public to be able to give public comment. I'd be willing to make a motion to that effect and develop a policy to, uh, present to the board, um. So I'll make that a motion.
So the motion is to formally continue as is, let the board come forth with a resolution.
Come, come forth with a formal policy, uh, to establish for that. I've talked with Jessica, she's that, you know, I mean, there's some people going in and out and it's kind of a, you know, administratively, you know, difficult, so uh, we just need to figure that out for staff as well, so.
I'll second.
Motion made seconded to formally, uh, maintain Zoom, uh, and, and come up with a policy forthcoming for the future, right? Discussion.
I guess the only, only thing I, I'm gonna point out or say is that, um, I think Zoom is good for, um, residents, um, they can watch on YouTube, they do access, but, um, I think we should definitely, people should be here and, um, we get paid to do a job, so we should show up, um, so that's my only comment.
And we all are doing this part time. We do our best to get here on every time, but life gets in the way, so that's a good thing for us to be one better than like the town, cause the town doesn't have Zoom and it can't, you know, people kind of question that all the time and what's going on in the town, so having this out here is, is a good thing. And I think for full transparency and having the opportunity of hearing our residents when with Zoom is a very good thing. And I'd like to, you know, that's, that's all I got to say about it too, so. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed name?
Name.
Motion carried. Um, P is discussion, uh, only December. I'd like to have a committee of the whole for our next December's meeting. Um, I think the president can call committee a whole, and my intention is to, to continue going forward with, uh, um, you know, and, and looking at doing a committee of the whole on a quarterly basis. So I think December sixteenth, we'd like to have that, um, meeting as a committee of the whole. Now there was some concern about starting maybe a little bit earlier. Um, if, if, would we be able to do that without a formal resolution? Or is that something that we could just do here tonight and, and adopt that? Well, would you like, you wanna start earlier on that, on that sixteen?
My only question is when we're meeting, um, so that's like a working session, right? So we'll have all of our, we'll just have our public safety or public works meeting at that time. We'll have all our, all our discussions and.
Correct.
And our, our board.
Yep.
We're.
Right.
Pretty quick. Uh, so then we won't have our normal, so we won't have our public works meetings or public.
Wouldn't need them in December.
Okay.
Everything would come together on the sixteenth, you would just pull through with your, your working session.
Yeah.
And then, uh.
Sixteenth works for me?
The issue is really is we ran longer on those days. We're also gonna be talking about, you know, possibly changing the, the finance. Meeting times, I know we canceled it for this last month, but, um, I, I. If finance. I, we're talking about committee of holes, so I'm just gonna say that, um, December sixteenth, committee of the whole. Um, there's no formal action that we can take on this because it's discussion only though, right?
Yeah, you can. But you're not gonna have a formal motion.
Right, so we need a resolution in order to start the meeting earlier. No?
Not.
Okay.
Not made only.
Okay, so.
Board meeting.
Okay. Well, board meeting would commence after that. Right? We do a committee of the whole and then board meeting about. Do you want to start at five o'clock? You guys want to start at five?
Five sounds good.
We get an hour in and then we start the, uh, general board meeting following that at six. Would that be enough time?
Wait, so we're gonna have. The. Board meeting right in front of the board meeting and.
Right, I think that's what I'm being told here, right?
Well, you can have it on another day, like committee of the whole, you don't have to do the same day as the board.
Okay.
But if you're gonna change. When the board meeting starts, then you.
Then you have to be. That has to be done by resolution, so that's a, that's a six P M start on the sixteen. The question is, do you want to do it? The committee at a hole at a different date? That's where the discussion needs to be.
Yeah, I think we should do it on a different.
Yeah.
And we won't have regular.
So if you give us two weeks, if you have the committee of the whole, and they had agenda items, topics that we still had some more questions about. Give us like ten days for staff to get you answers or updates on something. Like.
September third, it was second, so we did committee a whole on the ten? That would give you, uh, we're almost a week? Is that what you're looking for?
Yeah. I, that's just.
It's been a long time since we did a working session, I'm gonna.
One kind of the first week of committees. Then we had that committee of all.
Okay.
And then the board stayed the same. I can't make ten. Or the ninth. I can do the third.
You do the third.
Or the second.
Or the second.
Second.
I can't do the second. I can do the third or the fourth.
Second is out because you have the planning commission.
Yeah.
You important?
Third.
Not a. Usually at the end of.
I could do the third or the fourth, I could, the second and the evening we got planning.
We'll be right along though. I can't do the fourth.
The third it is.
Third.
Sounds like Caleb.
Good, third, good.
Maybe a whole on third or?
Yeah, you're a tailor.
My intent, my intent is to have something, uh, after the, um. The, uh, actual December sixteenth meeting, but kind of like a get together of all the staff and, and, you know, trustees at my expense. Uh, at one of the local establishments down here, so we could kind of socialize a little bit over the holidays. That includes the police and, and public works. So, uh, we're gonna do it December third, committee of the whole.
Five P M.
I think that makes sense. Okay.
That's your one meeting.
All right. Next item is, uh, this is discussion only is I C U P events. I put this on the agenda. It's the interim conditional use permit for Somerset Amphitheater. I want to get this, uh, discussion started on that. Ladies and gentlemen of the board, if you have an opportunity to review that and if you have questions or concerns or comments or. Wishes on, on that, please get them to me. We'd like to get this thing, uh, worked out if we can before the first of the year. Or shortly thereafter is my intent, so, uh, if you have any, any changes or anything you want to bring forward. Uh, we'll start the process, but I would say by no later than. The holidays, so we can get a official meeting started and get it approved before in our January meeting.
Do we have a list of events yet?
Sorry?
Do we have a list of events in there?
We don't, we have a list of dates.
We got a list of dates, okay.
I don't have them yet.
Okay.
In the I C U P, I think it does state that you, they have to notify the board. Prior to any of those, as far as size and, and, uh, when those, uh, events will occur, so.
We'll bring that feedback. Uh, I sent all the feedback to Jessica then.
Yeah, Jessica will get it to me and, and, uh, I'll probably get a couple of individuals if anybody's in, interested in sitting on, uh. Those meetings for, for the I C U P, uh, with me, just reach out as well.
Have we heard from them yet about? Just getting the C P done?
Yeah. Okay, that's why it's on the agenda. I said, I am not ready to have that conversation, however. Uh, we do want to get the ball moving and they said put it on the agenda and they got a couple of things they want to bring forward and I said, great, we'll, we'll start the process.
We, I believe last year passed. A resolution to have this on our October agenda, if I'm remembering right.
Wrong, wrong.
And it has to do with the timing of their bookings.
Right.
I'm just throwing that out there as FYI.
It was a little, yeah. We had a little problem in October, but we're gonna try to get it right. I read, we're looking to hopefully get it resolved, so sooner the better, uh, on getting those, you know, that info to me. Okay? Unfinished business, employee handbook update. I think there was some changes that were made in this November handbook, uh, you guys see them there in red, they, they took out. The, uh, information, the letter, the language that relates to, uh, administrators. And put in, I believe, department heads, most of them, right? But there was also a request for the leaves of absences on page eighteen to be incorporated by Andrea Otto and, uh. Compensatory time on sixteen. Um, holidays page fourteen. And vacation time page fourteen. I, I. Would like to, um. Talk to personnel and finance about the leaves of absence on eighteen and the compensatory time on page sixteen. I'm perfectly fine with fourteen, uh, the holidays, vacation time and the other language now that we got all that language changed. If they, if. You guys are okay with that, I will make it a formal mode.
Wait a minute, is, is it in red that it's updated to like on page thirty one is that an update to? Okay. Yeah, just I made sure.
Yep. I'll move that we, uh, approve the memorandum language on page fourteen on our holidays. Page fourteen vacation time with the, all the red highlighted. Language that's been provided in the book until you guys date in November twenty twenty five. And we'll table leaves of absences page eighteen and table compensatory time page sixteen for personnel and finance.
Is that the motion? Can I second that?
So I think. Caleb already seconded it. I just was reviewing the whole motion.
Perfect.
Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed name? Next item on unfinished business, the well of Riley invoices. I'd like to make a motion that we, uh, uh, formally, um. Send them a letter. To cease and desist from all few, further billings. Uh, until, until we get further information from them on the file, I think you were saying, and then, uh, uh, to. Did you get a choice to do that?
I looked at this and there's scope. They look at it at the end, it's sort of like catch all. It says anything else that the village may assign to them. So it looks like they were.
But who signs it to them?
No. Brian signed it. And so that's where their contact was, so that's who would be assigning things.
So I'd like to make a formal motion that we, uh. We, as board. Send well to Riley, a cease and desist, future bills. That we terminate this agreement. Until we set up a new one and we find out what exactly, along with that, that, uh, letter, find out what exactly we were. Well, yeah. Why there's a file?
Yeah, well, we have.
There is a file?
Yeah, they, they would have a file.
It should be.
As the client, you're in title.
Well, I guess if we paid for it. So.
So my second?
That's my motion. Motion made seconded to send well to Riley cease and desist and request a file and explanation of payment of service.
Just so I'm clear. You're talking about them not sending any more bills or you're gonna terminate the representation?
I've terminated their representation. Uh, uh, under this agreement that was then signed and dated on December fifth. That had to do with special, special services that, uh, where they had a catch all in here and they're continuing, because it says here that unless.
Didn't they bill us for billing it?
Yes. They built her for all of it, that's gonna watch that.
Any further discussion on that motion? Okay, motion is to cease and desist. From, and terminate this letter of agri, uh, this letter of agreement.
And request a.
And request. Copy the file and explanation of, uh, payments, second, or explanation of bill. Bill second. Further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed name? Or can carry? Discussion possible approval, M T I distributing for, for toll sample five forty.
Caleb Garn make a motion to approve the purchase of the San Pro at thirty one thousand two hundred seventy one dollars fifty five cents.
Second.
Motion made seconded to approve the purchase of the Toro Sample at thirty what?
Thirty one thousand two hundred seventy one dollars fifty five cents.
Thank you. Discussion.
Uh, only comment I had this is the guys did go back and look to see if there were any other kinds of attachment, attachments they could get for winter. They couldn't really find any that were worthwhile. Um, and then another comment is this is gonna free up a whole lot of time in the summer for the tool cats, we get more.
I have a question, is it, is the, is the quote still valid? Does it have the next break beginning on it back in July?
As far as I'm aware.
You'll be able to keep that quote, you'll be able to hold them to it?
Let's try.
We'll get again.
Further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed name? Motion is carried. So. I will need, uh, to entertain a motion. For close second.
I'll make a motion to, to close second. Uh, pursuant to Wisconsin's debts nineteen point eight five one E deliberated on the goal of purchasing of public properties and investing in public funds or conducting other specific. Public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a close second with main street property.
Second.
Motion made the second is roll call vote, but go by, uh, go by the, the, it is, um, yeah, Chris Dubeck. Caleb Garn.
Aye.
Tony Kern, aye. Brandon Broon.
Aye.
Chris Marino.
Aye.
Jessica Plur.
Aye.
All right.
Thanks a lot. Don't forget my whole.
I apologize, not again. I'm just going by the list. My apologies.
We have to do.
Do we have to do anything?
Yeah, we gotta make.
You have to adjourn.
Yeah. Make more to adjourn.
Oh, second.
Maybe second and do adjourn.